Board. Meeting Thursday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, for some of our businesses. Pledge allegiance and affair. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope you have a prayer.
Yes, sir.
Father, in the name of Jesus, coming for you, thank you for this opportunity coming for you and your people. We pray the blood of Jesus Christ over every one that is here, and ask that they cover us, Lord God. We loosely announce to the whole spirit, the rest of you, the body, and the mind in this meeting, that your will be done here for the city of Tallulah. We pray that everything that we do will be good before the edifying of Tallulah, so that it may possibly be all that you call it to be, in Jesus' Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mayor. Houston.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Day.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
Okay. Okay, any public comments on the agenda?
Well, Mayor, I had asked, uh, send an email in regards to, and I did to the agenda in regards to the suspension, uh, of the current curfew that is in place. But I noticed that that wasn't on the agenda.
We got it on number two.
No, you did not ask to suspend it when it's currently in place.
You don't have authority to suspend it, with all due respect, I'll say that. Motion to introduce a duty to the other board. Authority to suspend for ordinance, not equivalent code ordinance.
Okay, approved minutes of late twenty-second. Do I have a motion?
The mayor was late, can you come, when, can you come to the lab?
I did it, I did it.
Twenty-three, the latest set of handles.
Yeah, also, Mayor, uh, I'm not sure they did it or not. Uh, we did, uh, approve of the minutes, I think those were April, and when Miss, uh, finally, Miss, uh, Lewis sent us an email saying that she had left out, uh, when the city council had directed you to have the attorney to write a letter to Mr., uh, Archie Jones in regards to, uh, him with the finances for the city. So, uh, it wasn't in the, no, she sent us a, a corrected copy in the email, but I remember sending it in the minutes, and then we voted to adopt. So has that letter been written to, uh, Attorney Gary, have you drafted the letter, sent to Mr. Archie Jones?
I have drafted it, but I'm not mailed yet. I wanted to send it to the council for me. I'll be back.
So, uh, how soon would the council be, uh, ready to, looking at that letter?
Either tomorrow or Monday.
Okay, so I know we got the letter drafted for me real quick. But that's one day.
Motion to approve minutes of correction.
You, sir?
Let down.
All in favor?
No.
Uh, all right. Roll call, Jer. Scott?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Is it with the necessary corrections?
Harris?
Yeah.
Day?
Yes.
Wells?
No.
Number six, consider the date changed to the, um, June twenty-sixth meeting. Uh, we need to change that to June twenty-fifth because we got a meeting, uh, L A meeting in March on Westwood Road, on twenty-sixth. So we got to change, let's give it twenty-six to twenty-fifth. So everybody, at ten. Is everybody, number four for that?
You said from the twenty-second to the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
That reinstated.
Instead of.
That third.
I have a motion to, to, uh, consider that change.
I make a motion to change, uh, the date from June twenty-sixth, bringing it to June twenty-fifth, to restore.
Give a second?
Second.
All in favor? Who's seconded? Okay, that's, uh, my presentation for Miss Bailey.
I'm just asking out. Did you go eight, three? All right, y'all, I'm gonna turn my timer on so I can make sure that I stay on schedule. Did it, okay. I'm turning my timer on. All right. I am Zamar Bailey, and I'm a part of the Madison Advisory Coalition that was started by Joyce Sims, Brittany Sims-Washington, and Frank Newsom the Third, who was named, well, his nickname is Trey, he was the O four H advisor. And we are working on building ally, build a vision, build Tallulah. And we actually have some people in here who are part of that. Now, initially, we thought that we would be organizing by the organizations that already exist, like the Rotary Club, we have Tiara Girls, we have, um, uh, the various councils. But of course, we don't necessarily have representation from the people that are the organizations we thought we'd have representation from. But how many know that everybody and everything doesn't always appear or be what we think that it should be? Some just don't always pan out. However, we have a core group of people who are, who want to work. And so we're gonna use the core group of people who want to work, who have a vision for a better Tallulah, and we're going to work on creating a plan. We already have this strategic plan in place, and the strategic plan is working with the people to, one, for issues. We know that Tallulah has a meaning in one issue. But in real life, we have to organize the people around those issues in order to go from concern to solution. And then, two, um, we know that we have all types of partners, that people who are willing to come into Tallulah to work with us. And we have to utilize the resources that are at our fingertips. So, we don't have the representation from the organizations, but we do have an organization who's willing to partner and share their resources with us, and that's Black Voters Matter. We're always, you know, we complain about the situation. We also complain about, um, Tallulah hasn't progressed in the last twenty, thirty years, or however many. However, we can all work together to, one, give the people, remind the people that we have our own individual voices. We have our own individual voices, and we have to understand how to use those things. Now, the way that I talk to a person with a PhD isn't the same person that I would talk to that has a GED. We have to figure out how to better communicate with one another in a way that everybody understands. So as we're cultivating this phone banking system with the Black Voters Matter, we're gonna be able to talk to people around the issues that matter, around them, and talk to them in plain English, in a way that not everybody's walking around here confused based upon the concerns or the solutions that we think that we were supposed to bring to the table. Not everybody understands what's going on. So we're missing the opportunities to bring the solutions. But that's where we stop. Because we're gonna organize the people based upon what concerns them and based upon what they want to get involved in. Because if we co-create a vision, that means that if Miss Day comes to the room, if Mr. Wells comes to the room, and people out of Madison come into the room, everybody's on the same playing field. Everybody creates a space where we're all working and flowing together because every, Tallulah's progression should be on all of our hearts and minds. And that transcends any type of, of position that we may be in. So, I'm not gonna go into any more detail. The details that you need is a part of this packet. We're asking that you go in and read it. Our next meeting is a virtual meeting that's gonna be on Zoom. But we need to, um, elect secretary and treasurer because it's a lot of notes that have to take place. When we're creating a strategic plan, it has to be cohesive. That means that we're working together to create that plan, and it has to be elaborate. We can't hop from, oh, Tallulah is where it is now, to, oh, Tallulah is this now small town oasis. We don't hop on that every night, and everybody has these big picture views or big picture ideas, and we don't understand how to go from A to Z. We, we don't know, we don't realize we gotta go B, C, D, E, all of that. We have to go in step. So we need to realize, how do we create that plan? And that plan has to be created beyond the, um, the discrepancies we may have with money, or shortcomings we have with money. We have to think beyond where we are to vision something different. I ain't, y'all, I'm not this piece though, but that's my mail. Thank y'all. Y'all have questions, our number's on there. And thank, I would like to thank Mr. Wilson and Miss Amin for their stepping up to work with us. We're calling you all to step out and step out with us too.
Everybody's got paper there. All in favor, just set your phone numbers on.
Yes, my phone number is on here.
Okay, number eight. Introduce, is all introduced, no, no questions about it, no discussion. Is to introduce an ordinance to amend the current budget for the city of Tallulah, the current fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Have a motion to introduce.
But, man, I know we only introducing it, uh, but even the introduction, you know, you can't say something in regards to it. And I'm not trying to debate anything, but I said this about four months ago. I said, with the way things are going, and where we've spent that money in not accounting for it, I said, we're gonna come back in June and come in and say we want, we need to amend the budget, which we supposed to do throughout the entire year. And, you know, how often is say it, we continue to keep doing things the same way. And when we added that money from COVID, we're gonna admit it our budget in, to accommodate it. And, and, and what's troubling, and I'm, I'm gonna get to that in the next thing, is that we really don't know where we are financially. But we'll deal with it the next, uh, item.
Pam, we have COVID free and put, but this, this one at one at a time.
Sir?
I need it one at a time.
Okay, just introduce one ordinance there.
Okay, so I have, then we have to have a vote on that too?
No, no, no.
Merely a motion. Merely a standing.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Okay.
A motion to introduce a mo, an ordinance to amend the current budget. Second.
All in favor? We don't have to have a roll call.
I know statistically, y'all done that, but, but that step's not even necessary. It just needs to be introduced.
Okay. So, what, what do you ask, what do I ask?
Because that's what y'all genuinely done in the past, it's been your policy. If y'all wanna have a motion and a second to introduce it, it's fine, but the statute doesn't require that. It just merely needs to be introduced. And you should read the title of, of ordinance, and everybody should have been provided a, a written copy of it.
Okay, so when I said introduce an ordinance to amend the current budget, city of Tallulah, current fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, ending twenty twenty-five, is that correct?
That's efficient.
Now, what, uh?
Sir?
Go for the next one.
Um, well, yes, but did you list out? You listed out the dates, too, Mayor, I'm sorry.
July first, twenty twenty-four, and ending June thirtieth, two twenty-five?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you can go to the next one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before we go, please, I would like to.
There's no comment on this one.
It's on the agenda. Any agenda item you have, you can, you can comment on. On any, whether it's, whether the presentation, that's, that's law. That's, that's, you, you need to read the law.
There's no discussion on ordinance, since they can only introduce.
If it's on the agenda item, you can make comments.
So, the way that it works is with the ordinance, and, and here's why. First, you introduce it, and to follow the statute, then it has to be published in the newspaper. You have to give the public an opportunity to know when the discussion's gonna take place on the ordinance, and then that discussion can take place.
I understand that, I'm attorney, but you have, you, you, you're introducing an ordinance to amend a current budget. You made a statement yourself saying that everyone have the information on why this budget is being amended. I, I don't have it, and my concerns, my concern as a citizen is why, why, why do we have to amend the budget? If we had, if we, if we had a budget, and we made a budget before the fiscal year, why are we amending the budget? What went wrong within the current year budget that we had to amend? That, those are concerns that citizens need to know how we're spending our funds. And we just can't hide this thing and just sweep it under the rug because we don't want the citizens or anyone to speak up on the matter. That, that, we can't keep doing it this way. You mentioned that, oh, you guys are accustomed to doing things in a certain manner. Because you're doing things in that certain manner doesn't mean it's been right for many years. Now it's time to change, is see what our problem is, so we can fix what the problem is, instead of just sweeping things under the rug. We, we, this city is in a financial despair right now. If the city, the city is in a financial despair.
We're not discussing, we didn't introduce, we doing the next meeting with them too.
Mayor, sir?
Okay. Next one is introduce an ordinance to adopt a municipal budget for the city of Tallulah for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, to ending June tw- thirty to twenty-sixth.
Look, Mayor, I know we just introducing it, but, uh, several budget committee asked to break concerns into this process, uh, and I know y'all said we'll discuss it, but at our last council, at our last budget committee meeting, Mr. Scott tried to attend that budget committee meeting when he wasn't a budget committee member. It was myself and Miss Harris, and I told him he was not supposed to be here. Because if he's there, that mean we would violate the open meeting law. Because when I tried to get three members on the thing last year, we said we couldn't do it because we wanted to open. And when I asked him, he said, well, I was told to be here. So when he said I was told to be, I said, who, who told you to be here? He said the mayor and the city attorney.
Oh, I don't remember that.
No, I'll tell you what he said, we said right there. I'll tell you what he said, it's in the tape. He said, the mayor and the city attorney. And when I said he can't be there because Chief McCord asked me, he said, can we start the discussion? And then when Miss Harris comes, he leaves out. I said, no. I said, then we had three members of the council that was present in the meeting, which mean we would violate the open meetings law. So when he got up, he left out and said, well, I'll take it up with attorney. You didn't say that? I, I, you know what? I, I, I'm not, I'm not even put the chief into it, I'm not even put the chief into it. But you knew exactly what you said. One thing about me, I'm not gonna lie on you, and I don't lie for you. But did you not try to attend the meeting today?
I did.
Right, you just came on your own, right?
I sure did.
That's not what you said. And, and, and what it go, and not, what I said was, I told Miss Harris. I said, Miss Harris, they tried to set. Yes, you did, I promise you did.
Just cause you promised it don't make it happen.
No, you, 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 so, so, no, no, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Because what happened was, by him coming to that meeting, okay? Had we discussed anything that was city related, me and Miss Harris would have got in trouble for violating the open meetings law. That'd been ethical violation on our respect. So I take offense to that, because I told, I said, they tried to set us up. I said that. Um, when he came to the meeting, and he said, I asked him who told him to be here. And I, and I, and we, we go to court, we get subpoena, everybody had to tell the truth. And it was, the chief of police was there, the fire chief was there, uh, Mr. uh, Blanson, the store department was there, and Mr. Oden was there, and Mr. Oden, Oden was there. And I asked, and I'm gonna ask the chief, chief. I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm gonna ask you a question. When Mr. uh, uh, Scott came to that meeting, did I not tell him he had to leave?
You asked him what he, what he was doing there.
Right.
And you asked him to leave, yes you did, and I think he got up and left.
And so, at that time, I imagine that that's all you, to, to cause of problems. But you know what was said, because you asked me, can we start the discussion? And then when Miss Harris comes, Mr. Scott leave. I said, no, you cannot do that.
Yeah, I did ask you that, because, I mean, Miss Harris, she, I guess she was late.
She was late.
We was all sitting around talking.
Right.
And, hey, man, we had things to do. I said, okay, what can we get started? And when he come, when she come, he leave. And still we be two, that's how.
And so, next question, and when, when, when Mr. uh, did I not ask Mr. uh, Scott who, uh, told him to come, because he, you let me ask Mr. Scott who told him to come to the meeting?
I, I can't recollect that, and I'm gonna be honest, I, you said you asked him, you asked him, I can't recollect that.
And he told me, he said, the mayor, because he, he got a text on his phone. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying he said it off. I'm just saying what he said to me. He said, the mayor and the attorney. And when he got up and walked, I said, Mr. Scott, you can't be here. When he got up and walked around that tape, I don't know if Miss Harris had made it, not yet. He said, we'll take, we'll take it, we'll take it up with the attorney.
I didn't see.
You said, I said, I promise you did.
Okay.
He said, take it up with the attorney, what he saying?
This is just an introduction.
You know you did.
All right, now we're gonna go number two.
Now, but no, no, but my other concern is this. I asked, do we have a policy and procedure for preparing the budget? Because we came to the meeting, Mr. Oden already had figures on there that he already put down. I said, this not how the budget's supposed to go. I said, he had figures already down. So I said, well, I asked Mr. Lewis on, I wrote my notes on it, I'm gonna forget. I sent an email to you guys, uh, on April thirtieth, asking what are the procedure, budget policy, procedure, draft of the budget? I yet to get it. We come to the budget committee meeting, nobody has nothing in mind on how the budget is developed. So that's why we end up in trouble, we don't have no policy. That's why we always have an amended, because we have no set structure on how this thing is done. So when we came to meet with Harris, we sent the meeting, Mr. Oden, he had to go back in and find papers, had to go find this, find that, we never got a chance to discuss nothing. So I stopped coming. I said, I'm not gonna keep wasting my evenings. And so now, all of a sudden, now a budget's been prepared without the committee being present, being a part of the process. And then next week, what we gonna do is, we gonna come in, we gonna have public here, then we said, we can't discuss it now. So next week, we gonna be adopted everything. Regardless of what the questions are, we gonna adopt it. And that's all.
I was waiting on the call from Mr. Oden.
And there was nothing.
Okay, we're on number ten?
No, she, she's talking, she's talking, she's talking.
Yeah, I just said that I was also waiting on Mr. Oden for some type of, uh, conversation about, he's ready to work, because he, he said he was not ready. And I never got that call, so we never came back.
No. So we didn't have a budget committee for the budget process.
It never happened.
It never happened.
What the law states about that, attorney?
I have to look it up. I'm sure it's meant to be a meaningful process for the budget committee.
So then next week, we gonna come in, you said, we can't discuss it now. So next week, we gonna come in, have a public here on everything that we talking about now. And then the process gonna get rushed, it gonna shut everything down, then let's go to adopt the budget, bang, it's gone. With very little input from nobody.
You definitely can come in and discuss the ordinance.
But I'm saying, it ain't gonna matter, because it wants to, once it's introduced tonight, the next party gonna, they gonna pass everything. Everything.
All right, enough to me.
And so the budget committee had nothing to do with the budget, nothing whatsoever.
Then what's the point of having a budget committee?
Okay. All right, that's number ten. Introduction of amendment to section twelve, one seventy-five, one eight, revised general, general curfew ordinance for the municipal code of ordinance of Tallulah.
Okay, you wanna take one more question down? Okay, I'm, I'm the one that requested that item to be added to the agenda. And, and my reason for wanting to do that is because right now, with the current curfew, that we understand that there's measure to have to be taken in order to provide safety for the citizens of Tallulah. But my, my concern is when I looked at the ordinance, and there was no, no timeframe on it. It, it's an indefinite curfew that once the chief has acted, it is determined by him when it ends. And, and far as legislative thing, that's not how it's supposed to go. Uh, uh, so what I want to do is, because right now, is make an amendment to that, uh, part of the, the, uh, general curfew ordinance. And my amendment states that, um, our, the chief of police with council approval has the authority to impose curfew sanctions and restrictions for declared emergency situations, including but not limited to emergency situations that threaten human life, property, and the overall safety of the citizen and community. This curfew may be enforced for a maximum of thirty days, with the possibility of extension pending review of the declared emergency. And, and the reason why I say thirty days, because when I talked to the legislative honor's office, she stated that our ordinance can't be, our, our curfew law can't be more restrictive than the state law. So once you, and, and what we supposed to do is declare the emergency, we never declared it. So we have to declare a state of emergency by way of the council. And then, once we declare it, the curfew goes into effect. And so the state law says that state emergencies can only last for thirty days, the max, and then you have to come back and revisit that stat, that, uh, curfew to see if it's still needed. And if it's still needed, then you can only do it for thirty days again before you have to come back and review it. But to have a curfew that does not have a timeframe on it was a lie. And then for, for it to be enacted without council approval kinda gives some leeway to where the council has to sign off on all legislative documents. But when we passed this thing back in two thousand twenty, I don't know if anybody read it, but it just said that the chief can do it and without no, no, uh, council approval, when you pull the, uh, curfew ordinance, but it has no statute limitation on, it has no timeframe on it, in which we have to come back and revisit the issue according to the current curfew that's in place. And that's section twelve, dash, one seventy-five, point, one eight, uh, of our city code ordinances.
Is this one?
Yeah, that's, that's the one. So I'm trying to do a revision to it, I wanna add an amendment to it. And that's what I gave to the council, to introduce that amendment, that, you know, the chief with, with council approval. Not saying that we can't declare a state of emergency, however, it needs to come before the council, and the council boasts of the cloud emergency, then it goes into effect for thirty days. And after thirty days, we come back and see whatever the situation was, we revisit that situation. Because if the emergency is, is over with, then the, the curfew ends. And that's how the state does it. Am I correct?
No, you're not.
Am I correct, Attorney Green?
No, you're not.
Before a state of emergencies?
No.
The state can only do it for thirty days?
No.
What the?
It doesn't.
Attorney, Attorney?
Okay, y'all go ahead. Y'all go ahead.
As it relates to our water system, I can tell you that you're only different. As it relates to our water system, I can tell you that it can only be for thirty days at a time.
No, no, I'm talking the state of emergency, the state of emergency has nothing to do with just water. It has to do with emergencies.
There may be other sections I'm not aware of. I'm, I'm not gonna just answer questions without doing the research on the ones I know. There may be other incidences where it can be longer, but I just wanna check.
And Mr. Cal, Arthur once said. He said that the, the, uh, state of emergencies, no matter how they declared, uh, no matter how they are, what it is, he said it can only go for thirty days.
No.
And then you have to renew it, that's why we renewing the state of emergency for the water. The, the state law says thirty days. And then you have to renew it another thirty days. And you can only renew it for a maximum amount of ninety days consecutively, before it has to come before the legislative body again. That's state law.
Well, we don't, we're not sure, so we, we know vote should be had, hasn't done.
No, we introducing it.
We, we introducing it, oh.
And so.
You can't put in this. Attorney, can you?
I, I'm introducing, like you did the budget. I'm introducing it, and I'm, and when you introduce it, I gotta tell what my reason is for wanting to introduce it.
You, you can't change that. I'm asking.
Uh, no, we, I'm introducing the amendment to the ordinance as it is now. So now, what, we introduced the amendment, then we drafted the way it's supposed to be drafted, then you, and you run it in the, uh, adopted journal for the city, for Ms. Brown.
You're supposed to have the copy of the ordinance when you introduce it.
I gave my, my amendment. Right, I gave my, my proposed amendment to it.
That's, that's fine.
Right.
And, and that's correct. In, in my opinion, all of the discussion, other than the mere introduction of the ordinance, is extraneous to the conversation. It's not what we're supposed to do. You're only supposed to introduce the ordinance and discussion comes after it's been published in the paper. I'm not here to police the meetings, I'm just here to tell you what the law is, and that's what the law is on it.
So she's, she, tell her, she's, we might do it.
Don't do it.
You've got to introduce it, ma'am.
What were you saying?
We just introduce it.
I'm actually changing, that's, I'll just give you my rationale for my.
Okay, that's what he's talking about.
It's been introduced, you can move on to the next agenda item.
That's it. That, that's her opinion. Can Pam say that right?
He's introduced it, you can move on to the next agenda item.
Okay, good.
So that mean you got to run it in the paper?
Yeah.
But actually, Mr. Oden's responsibility is to.
Give him the understanding, because he think you saying that, the mayor understanding that you, this is all he's gonna do, and we're, we're done with this, period. Give him the understanding, please.
But just because he introduced it doesn't mean it has to be adopted.
The council has adopted.
The introduction is what we have to legally. Then it runs in the paper, we come back next week, have a public hearing. No, it's have to run, then the next meeting.
Can we do this? Okay. Now, we don't have to.
It has to run two consecutive weeks.
Two consecutive weeks.
Then we come back.
And then you vote. Twenty six, twenty five.
Okay, we're on two.
Your next meeting's on Wednesday, it'll be the meeting after that.
It's the twenty fifth.
It should, it should be in the paper today.
It should be in the paper, on Wednesday, the Wednesday.
It can't be in the paper, they just introduced it.
You can't have it.
I mean, I'm talking about the ordinance itself.
Well, it can't, we just introduced it tonight, so even the, the, the budget amendment should not be in the paper today.
The budget amendment is in the paper.
It is.
It shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be.
You have to introduce it against the law.
Can I speak?
There's, there's no way it could've been in the paper yesterday.
He just said it was.
It is in this before yesterday.
He just said it. Because I knew, that's the energy, he says it's in the paper today.
Which one did send the paper?
What's it, what's in the, the budget of the paper?
It will have to run an additional two weeks then, because.
Well, uh, the paper, you know, we have the weekly, so you gotta work around the weekly situation.
No, no, no.
I put it in, I put it in, uh, this week, and it'll have the next two weeks to run.
No, no, no. You gotta go ahead.
And that's the way we've always done it, basically. Uh, I think last year, we got it, we had to extend because we had, we got some kind of spying with it, but.
See. That's one of the, that's one of the problems. We keep saying we've always done it this way or that way.
Yeah.
And we're doing it completely wrong. You cannot run it in the paper, it has not been introduced to the council yet. That's called circle being alone. It has to be formally introduced by the council before it goes in the paper. That's the law.
Well, it.
It has to be introduced first in the council meeting.
Well, it's, it's more like together, really.
No, it's supposed to introduce first in the council meeting. See, that's what I'm saying, see, see, you're trying to follow the process, but he's already circumventing the process.
It should be introduced first in the meeting. I don't know that running it additionally defeats the ordinance.
You've got to go.
But it, it definitely has to be run twice.
But, but the law states that in order for an ordinance to go into effect, it must follow the proper procedures that has been established.
Somebody's disagreeing.
So in order for it to be aired in the paper, it has, ran in the paper, has to first be introduced in the council meeting. You can't run it in the paper today and then come and introduce it today. Because what if there was no council meeting, what if nobody showed up for the meeting? That mean it's running a week, and we haven't a meeting for it to be introduced properly. So either we gonna do what's right by the law, on certain things, and then ignore the law on other things, then that mean we run the, uh, came to circus.
It, it has to be approved by the end of the year, too.
Yeah, we, we know that, but that's why we tell you all the time, we can't wait till the last minute. So we asked what's our working on our budget back in January. But see, when we have a tendency of doing this way until the last minute, then we come and say, we gotta go and approve it. So we rush everything at the last minute, that's not called proper management. And that's why every year, we have to amend the budget at the end of every fiscal year. On any other trial, we'll be, then we fire. Anywhere else but Tallulah, that won't be tolerated. No way else but here. And then we wonder why we in financial shambles.
Okay.
We can't just skip over there, how, how y'all gonna fix that?
Let's go get that. If you need, you come up and talk, but don't, don't.
Now you wanna tell me don't, well, y'all ain't doing the thing right.
It's time to do it. I did not come in. Okay, number eleven. Approve the contract with Magnolia Water Service. You will see sharing customer information. Any comments on that?
Attorney.
Yeah, chief.
Mr. Mayor, the, the citizens doesn't have, in our packet, a contract. We, we need to be, we need to be made aware, because these are common items. So the citizens need to be made aware of what's contractual agreement that you guys are trying to put in place for the, the citizens' dollars. I mean, we, 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 we can't keep. Sir, I'm a percent, sir, I'm, I was speaking, if you don't mind.
Give three minutes. That's it.
You, you, you know, you, 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 you always rush to judge, and you, you always rush to judge, and to quiet me down, sir. But it's evident, it's very clear, that the city, I don't know who's running the city. Well, I, I have, I have, I have a thought.
Uh, who's running the city? No, you're not coming, you come up here and talk, and talk to me about that.
You're not gonna continue, you want your finger in.
First of all, Mr. Wilson, he didn't recognize. They didn't recognize you before you speak. Hello?
Okay.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Okay. Comment, tell me, please.
I'm trying to get somebody else to chat, I said, maybe say, I ain't talking too much, I don't hear a chance to say that in some way.
The question was, how are you all, or is there a contract for the people to see regarding that no the water?
That's, that's what we're proving now.
No, it's for the people, for the citizen. To see.
Let me have one, provide a copy for you, I'll tell you it's online.
It wasn't online.
Just, just on the line?
Can you read it, Mr. Mayor?
I'd be happy to read it for you.
And let me say something too, if you don't mind, Mayor. Uh, last council meeting, we had a disorderly conduct incident in place. And I asked my officer to remove, uh, the individual out of here. And several individuals interfered and said that I couldn't do that. Now, the ordinance clearly say that disorderly conduct is a criminal offense. And whether you're in the church house, the courthouse, the gas house, the outhouse, anywhere else, it's a criminal offense to take. I'm the cheapest edge of law enforcement, and I have the right to enforce the law. And the next time, anybody interfere with my duties, I'm gonna arrest you. And I don't care who you are, and what's, and what's at the win, see, that's my problem. Right there, you, you don't want nobody to talk, but then you always interfering.
I'm letting you finish.
Always.
But you're threatening the.
I'm not threatening nobody, I'm just saying, the next time anybody interfere with me doing my job, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lock you up for interfering with a law enforcement. It's simply, and that is the law.
Okay, now, so you say disorderly conduct is a criminal offense?
It sure is.
So now, the next time you jump up hooting and hollering, and take it over the meeting.
I never.
No, 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 you tell them, you tell them, you tell them to talk, I'm gonna talk. So, so now, so now, if the chief jumps up and start hollering and disrupting the meeting, that mean one of us, because I was told by state, to call the state police.
State police have no.
So now, yes they do, so if, if, if. So if, 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 see, you, you let the chief talk, you don't let nobody talk. So now, if the chief is being disordered, like he was, and that mean hollering, call the folks, tell the folks to shut up. That's disorderly. So now, if the chief is being disordered, he needs to be arrested. So if we're gonna arrest citizens being disordered, that mean the chief gotta be ordered. So if he's being disordered, we call the sheriff or state police, and have him arrested or moved. So like, there's authority over him. Now, he just can't run a rush hour and holler over me like he did?
Nobody. Nobody, nobody authority, she's seeing his mind inside of my jurisdiction.
He scared the fuck out of me. So if he's hollering like that, that's disorderly. So now, if he's supposed to keep order, who's gonna put him in check when he's out of order?
Okay. Just Phil?
Yes, please.
I just checked the city of Tallulah website, and the contracts were, were posted on that site, Mr. Wilson.
It wasn't there when I looked at it.
Okay, I, I, they're, they're there now, I don't check the website.
So it's only twenty-four hours.
I, I certainly am not arguing with you, I, I didn't look at it twenty-four hours ago.
I did, I look at it every week.
I hear you. Um, I'm happy to read this, I'm happy to go make copies of this. Yes, sir.
To be exact, that wasn't posted till this morning. It wasn't posted yesterday, because I, I seen when she dropped Ms. Harris paperwork off, it was five eleven. It wasn't posted on the website last night, because I checked, because I do my research the night before. It wasn't up there till ten o'clock today. Because I was on my way to Shreveport.
Ms. Harris, did you get your email before five yesterday?
No, 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 she got her packet at five eleven.
But you got your email copy of the packet before five, did you?
She got her packet at five eleven. Ms. Yvonne Loua dropped it off in her black car. I was, I was, I was standing over the car. I'm not lying to you.
It's not, it's not my place to argue or assert, assume the truth or figure things out. Not a place to give you the law.
Because that's all I do, that's how, that's how I go get my information, I, I look on the website.
I understand.
And it wasn't there. That's all I'm saying.
Can we get the highlights of the contract?
That's all, that's all we asking for.
I, I'm happy to read it to everybody. So, um, several meetings ago, um, the council members all received copies of the contracts that were proposed. There were three at the time. There are now only two. This contract is an agreement for sharing of customer information. And, um, the contract, like all other contracts, sets out facts at the beginning of it. And whereas articles, as we call them. First, it states that the governor has issued a state of emergency, and then lists out the first executive order. Then it mentions that Magnolia pursuant to the order has assumed operational and management control of the water utility service in the service area, that being Tallulah. And it states that Tallulah provides the sewer and trash collection services to customers within the service area, essentially distinguishing that there are two separate services that are being provided. Magnolia's responsible for one, and Tallulah the other. That's right, water and sewer are separate. Then it goes on to state that Tallulah uses water provided from the water utility system operated by Magnolia to provide sewer services to its customers. And Tallulah bills those customers directly for sewer utility services based upon volumetric usage. And Tallulah requires the billing data for Magnolia water service customers in order to bill the same customers for sewer services. Tallulah requires notice of new water service connections in the service area, as well as any change in account status, in order to initiate or transfer sewer and trash collection service and billing. And Magnolia desires to provide the required customer data to Tallulah. And that, and that's the conclusion of basically the fact period. Now we're moving into the contract section of the document. Now therefore, for the reasons set forth above, and in consideration of the mutual promises and agreements set forth in this agreement, Magnolia and Tallulah agree as follows. I'm gonna read out.
What page do you want me to read?
Two. Notification of new service or change in account status. In this paragraph, Magnolia shall be required to notify Tallulah by written notice monthly of any new water service connection, as well as any change in account status, such as a change in name of the account holder. Such notice shall include the name, service address, and date of connection or transfer for any new or transferred account. Monthly water usage reports, paragraph two. Magnolia shall provide a monthly report showing the current meter reading and consumption for each of its customers for use by Tallulah for billing sewer service customers. This report shall be submitted electronically no later than the fifth day of the following month. As consideration for Magnolia providing this billing data, Tallulah shall pay to Magnolia a total fee of one hundred dollars per month. The amount of the total fee due shall be billed monthly to Tallulah with payment due within thirty days of the statement. Paragraph three. Cost of new connection or account transfer information. As consideration for Magnolia providing new connection or account transfer information, Tallulah shall pay to Magnolia a total fee of one hundred dollars per month. The amount of total fees due for the service shall be billed, be billed to Tallulah monthly and included in the monthly water usage report with payment due within thirty days.
So why, can I ask that, why are we paying a hundred dollars?
All right, so.
Why, why are we doing that?
So, Ms. Harris, um, there is accounting services, and this is coming from Magnolia, this is not coming from Pema. There are accounting services associated with providing that data to Tallulah. Before, whatever.
But Tallulah was already providing the data for itself.
Yes, it was. And, and, and Tallulah had employees that it was paying hourly to do those services, okay?
Say had.
Yes, had, I said had. That they were paying to provide those services. So Magnolia is now paying for those services, utilizing some of the funds that they're receiving, because they're receiving all of our water funds.
So.
They're providing those services. So whatever the call, I don't know what the cost of that service was to Tallulah before, whenever we were paying for the employees who did the service. But the cost to get that information from Magnolia is two hundred dollars total per month to get the monthly water usage report and the, um, cost of new connection or account transfer information. So it's a total of two hundred dollars is the cost now, and before the cost would have been whatever it costs the city of Tallulah to employ those people to go do that service. So it's a total of two hundred dollars is the cost now, and before the cost would have been whatever it costs the city of Tallulah to employ those people to go do that service. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that sounds, it just sounds like we keep dealing with.
The, the, the thing is this, regardless of what the contract says is this, the, the more, yes, you can, yes, you can, I'm sorry to hear.
Do you want me to give the contract?
But the most important thing is this, and the most important thing, you started out, you said that the governor issued a state of emergency.
Yes.
And when you first talked to us according to the state of emergency, the governor said that they were going to pay for Magnolia services. Then when Magnolia assumed responsibilities of management and operations for the water company, they said that all billing and water-related expenses will come out of collections and billings. So now, and if anything outside of that, the governor said GOSEP was going to pay for it. So now, we're saying the city of Tallulah has entered a contract with Magnolia when they was brought on by the state.
I see your point.
So if, if we're gonna pay Magnolia for the information, then we don't need to get a state of emergency.
So, Councilwoman Wells, and, and this is what I want you to consider, and this is a legal consideration. As I understand it, this contract has been proposed to the city by Magnolia, because this is information that they're providing from water, not for water, from water for sewer. And the city is at liberty to hire sewer employees to go collect the very same data and information, or it could pay Magnolia two hundred dollars per month for that information.
See, this, 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 this is my concern, this is my concern. A- a- as the city attorney, y- you have not disagreed with anything that has called for Tallulah giving out money when it comes to water?
It's not my job.
No, but, no, but, right, right, let's get into now. In every letter you wrote, it been to the effect where I think it's best that you all pay this out. And if the state has entered a contract with Magnolia by way of a state of emergency, then Tallulah should not be paying nothing. Especially when we send Mr. Odom, he's telling the amount of money that we're losing hand over feet. So then, now we're coming, Magnolia comes in, you know, it says, according to the contract with the state, you know, it says that, that the state Magnolia, GOSEP will pay contract, provide service to manage the operation of Tallulah's municipal water system for an initial period of twelve months.
Yes.
The work will include the daily operation of management of the water system.
That's right.
And then a detail, develop a detailed corrective plan. So then it says, uh, part of the contract, it says they gonna manage all customers' service functions, including responding to increased complaints and service requests. So now, if citizens say, well, I'm gonna try to come and get my meter again, because I don't think it's right. I had a, because kids told me that, that, that people told us she had to pay forty-five dollars for them to come back out and read their meter. And then it says they were administered meter reading, billing operation, food and invoice and generation, payment process and look, man, oversee new service connections, disconnection, account transfers. So now, they, that's what they, a contract that they have with the state.
That's right.
That's not Tallulah. So the, the state contracted, that's the scope of work that they supposed to provide, according to the state's contract.
Right, between them and the state, and this is between them and the city of Tallulah relative to sewer.
So, no, no, listen, it said, connect, it said also for reconnection or connection of new service lines. So now, when, when, but when the state gave them full operation of the water company, they understood that our water and sewer was both related. Because you can't have a sewer without a water being there. So now, what I'm starting to think now, is that the city is being shaken down.
For two hundred dollars a month.
It, it, it all adds up. Because see, right now, Magnolia is getting all the money, we getting nothing. And, and as the attorney, I, I, I'm trying to figure out when are you gonna ever object to anything with Tallulah doing?
It's not my position to object, it's, it's your position to object, and if you do, you should, y'all will all get to vote on it. My only position is to give you the information and to tell you whether or not it's something that you can or cannot do. Now, in this instance, I will tell you that if you do not enter this contract, that's fine, that, that's up to you, you can all vote to do that. And if you don't elect to allow Magnolia to provide you that data for two hundred dollars a month, which they've agreed to do pursuant to this contract, then our sewer system will have to go get that information separately, or.
You have to two, that's, that's.
That's it, that, that's it, the contract, and Councilwoman Wells, you did a great job going through the, those parts of the contract, but nowhere in that contract, and I would need it again, between GOSEP and between Magnolia, not between us. Does it say that they have to provide us that data for sewer?
But, but, but they're getting, that they're providing us the water information.
They're providing the state the water.
They, they, they're providing the water information, right? The state, the state has, the state, they're providing the city with the water information. They're not providing us sewer information.
That, the volumetric determination is not.
Right, but, it, it, it's something that they're already doing in that scope of work.
That's right.
So, so that's part of war. So to give Tallulah the water information is where I, I, I have an issue with, we're paying them for everything, and we're not getting nothing in return.
They're absolutely free to have that.
You're not, you don't object to nothing, that these folks don't. That's because I care about Tallulah.
My thing, so their employees that were already employed by the water company, they did that as a job while they were on the clock, there was no extra pay. But do we have anybody working for the water company now?
No.
Do we have workers?
You, you'd have to get a report from the water company, but as I understand it, the rest of the water company.
That we don't have any.
Listen, and, and now, according to the contract between the state and Magnolia, point three, point seven, it says staff augmentation. It says providing staff augmentation for all personnel necessary to maintain a data operation system, including administrative, professional, operational personnel, and augment means to make better or make larger, increase. So now, for all of our employees to quit Tallulah Water Company and work for Patterson is not augmenting our staff. It is actually decimating our water company employees. So according to, I could be wrong, but for them to quit the city and then work for someone that's been contracted by the state, that may be a breach.
I don't think it is, but.
So the state contracts a company to work on.
I'm not doing theoretical.
Oh, no, no, that, that, that's not real, that, that, that's real.
I'm just not gonna do it.
So, according to the contract.
That contract?
Yes.
This is the one that I came to talk about.
I know, I know, but this is related to all of that, because you mentioned the state of emergency that the governor declared that brought Magnolia to Tallulah in the first place. So we wouldn't be having that, that you're talking about, if we didn't have this that started it.
So, are, are you gonna, is that a breach?
What I think that we need to do now is figure out there's a breach of contract for all our employees to quit working for the city of Tallulah and go and work with Patterson. Because now, if, if we were to get our water company back, because I said it's gonna take a while, we have no money to work at the water plant.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's actually about the contract. Um, so.
We never finished.
We're supposed to go into receivership for twelve months, is that what I just heard?
We're not in receivership, we're in a state of emergency. And the governor's renewing it every thirty days. Um, you know, the, the first indication we got regarding the state of emergency, when we had conversations with Senator Jackson Andrews at the, one of the public meetings that we had by Zoom, was that it was expected that it would be in place for a year.
Okay, and so, and that was.
Now, the governor hasn't said that to me, I didn't receive that in writing, that's just what was discussed at that meeting.
And it's in the contract, it's to February twenty twenty-six, so it's in the contract.
Well, the contract allows for either party to withdraw within thirty days' notice. Now, the contract was only for a year or whichever one of those two things happened first, okay? And that doesn't mean that the governor would stop the state of emergency at the end of the year, or, or that it would even last for the full year. So that, that's just the contract between GOSEP and Magnolia. That has nothing to do with whether or not the governor will continue to issue a state of emergency or not. It's also possible that at any point in time, we could return to a state of receivership. You know, the governor has those functions and his options, along with if it's receivership, that is through the court system. But the state of emergency is entirely within, within his party, so.
So, with that being said, the purpose of this is to bring us up to code?
That's correct.
Okay, but how do we go or get up to code if our employees are no longer our employees, because the purpose is for us to become more independent? Or independent of the state of emergency of the receivership, right?
So at this point in time, the reason we're under a state of emergency, and, and the sole goal of the state of emergency in the Department of Health, as I understand it, is to get clean water to Tallulah as soon as possible. That's it, and, and, and the goal is clean water. And Magnolia is tasked with the responsibility of not only working towards the goal of clean water, but they're also expected to be providing the state with facts, data, information, and possible ways to solve the clean water crisis that we have in Tallulah right now.
Receivership two point oh, that's all the, receivership two point oh.
That's where we are. And so, the independence of, of the water system and having clean water, I think having clean water is probably the first goal of the state of emergency, and they're looking at all of the options that they've been looking at in the past and probably then some. You know, I can't say with certainty what those are or what will happen, but in the past, we know that they have considered rehabilitation of the plant and costs associated with that. We know that there, when we were in receivership, they considered tie-ins, and then, I think whenever we were with sustainability partners during presentations, I think others have considered a new location for the plant where there's clean water and then source and get back to Tallulah. There's, there's no reason to think that all of those aren't being considered right now, but I can't tell you exactly what the solution is. All I can tell you is that clean water is the goal, and that's why we're under a state of emergency, we don't have it. We're a failing system.
Okay.
Wait, wait, so.
Yes, uh, several things. Um, make point that I, I am for us getting our water plant back and us getting revenue back. Now, Magnolia is, has presented a contract, and I'm not paying them one penny. They've taken all of our revenue, are they accounting to us monthly of the revenue and the expenses? Or they just taking our water, our water plant and the revenue and just gone? And now they're telling us we've got to pay them to get information from them? That is our water plant.
Two hundred dollars is all.
I don't give a one penny, they've taken. I don't give them one penny, because they've taken all of the revenue, and they're not accounting for it. Do we know what they're doing with it? Do we know how they're making a profit?
Two, the sewer bills have to go through the water.
I know, my sewer bill is going up, and I, that's a comment I'm gonna make, uh, because I'm flushing the mud out of my home, so now my sewer bill is up, and I was wondering about that, now I understand, because I'm flushing the water, therefore you all are charging more with the sewer. So I'm gonna have to deal with that, I, I realize now, which is insane, but I'm gonna have to deal with that. There's no way we need to pay them one penny, and is anybody asking them for an accounting of what revenue they're taking in and what they're doing with the profits? They're saying they're trying to take more money from us, I mean, how much do we have the money? We just paid a one point five million dollars, uh, that was New Year's Eve on the water. And we're still saying the water is, I can tell you at my house, that water is not straight.
Well, well, the man, the man tracked, the man tracked a letter about me going to, uh, Baton Rouge, and said that citizens told him that the water quality is improved.
Crystal.
So, so you, you're saying, the man said, in, in the letter though, tracked, I don't know what it was about him or about who it was, wrote a letter talking about me going to Baton Rouge, and said the citizen told him the water quality has improved. So I was saying, I was gonna get a cup, I, I was saying, I was saying I would get a cup of water.
The water is fine.
My water is not.
So, so, i- i- if the water is good, the water, the water is good. I would ask the chief, I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm just saying something, to go get a cup, if the quality is proved, get a cup, get a cup of water out the bath from wherever you got a sink at, faucet at, bring it back and drink it. If it's a drink.
You say chief? You say chief?
I'm gonna tell you why I knew it. Can I say why I knew it?
Okay, hold on, sorry, hold on.
I haven't had my three minutes, and y'all have taken my three minutes, my three minutes. And I'm not trying to give a three minute, I'm just trying to make some points. Uh, we need to get an accounting from Magnolia, they're trying to get money from us, that's our water plant. We have, unless it's been signed over, I don't care what the governor has done, they can't just take the revenue and not account for it, and then tell us we've got to pay them, uh, to get information, that shouldn't even be an issue, they're supposed to send that.
That's on the bill, they're not taking, no, they're really. They're, ask somebody, you know, what the bills are.
And they can provide that information, they've taken our revenue, if they hadn't taken the revenue, we could provide our own information. But they've taken it, and now they're trying to get more money that we don't have. And the state has done this, the governor needs to be contacted and told, we expect that information, with no more money taken from the city. We're saying the city is in a, in a, uh, financial straits. I, and even though it's two hundred dollars, I don't want them to get one penny, because again, they've taken all of the revenue. And again, nobody's answering me, who are they accounting to for the revenue they're taking? This is a private company that's taking public funds, and are they accounting for the expenses and the revenue?
That's how we bill a building.
No, no, she's, she's not talking about the sewer number.
I'm just talking about the sewer, just talking about the water.
No, she's asking.
Magnolia has taken all the revenue from the water.
No, she's asking you, just slow your question down, and ask it in the simplest terms you can ask it.
Ma, I'm talking about Magnolia, not the sewer. Magnolia Water Company is now, I'm paying, and I assume everybody else is sending them the money for the monthly warranty. Okay, so they've taken all of the revenue from the city, the city, unless the city is getting some of the revenue, are we? I don't think we are, right? They've taken all of our revenue, and we're not, are they accounting to anyone? Which they should be accounting to you, you should be getting some accounting of the revenue and the expenses, and what profits they're making, what they're doing with that money. Now they're setting a contract here, and I'm sure the next contract is some kind of deal as well, they, they want us to pay them more money, they figured that out, the revenue they've taken from us. And that water company is a revenue maker, let's be clear, it is. And if they're saying it's not, it's not true. And again, we can't let people keep coming in here, getting money from the city for water, again, we don't, we don't address one point five million New Year's Eve, and y'all said that was for water. And again, the, the quality of water in my home is just as bad as it was. And like I said the other day when they cut it off, I've never seen black water in my house, that water was black coming in my house. So I, I, to say the water quality is better, I, I'd like to know where, because it's not on, on Biden Drive in Charlotte, it's not that. So I, I would like us to find out from Magnolia, and I don't know why we can't, they need to cancel the revenue. And if the governor needs to be told they need to cancel the revenue, we own that water plant, legally we own it, and they need to cancel that revenue, and we don't need to pay them enough money for anything, and the governor needs to be told, they need to, they need to provide that information.
So we can certainly ask for a telling, um, I think Mr. Odom could probably speak to whether or not the water company was operating at a loss even prior to Magnolia taking over or.
And I can answer that, when I asked him about that, I was told it was, and then a couple of months before they went into receivership, we said it was then making a profit. So that water company can make a profit, that it is, and we need to account for that. And, and a point about those employees, that they've taken our employees, now, they were supposed to reimburse the city for paying those employees before they took them, correct? And we were saying they had not reimbursed them, so how in the world are they gonna ask us for a penny when they have not paid what they owe? Now, we need to make them pay them, pay us for anything they owe us, at the very least, before we agree to give them one penny. Now, am I wrong about that, that they reimbursed us for when we paid the, the water company employees while they were working for them? Haven't we been paying the water company employee?
Well, they're, they're complaining to them now, they went to them too.
No, 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 we paid them before they went to them, we were paying them, and they were supposed to reimburse us for the payment.
They're getting revised data for Mr. Odom on that, on those invoices.
So they haven't paid us.
They, they don't have all the data that they need to do it, and if Mr. Odom's working with them to give them the data.
There's no reason they can't, okay, y'all not supposed to go to get a one penny, and they need to cancel that money.
You, you know what sticks out to me? It, it is certain questions that's asked that you can answer right after that. But then when I ask you a question, you'll say, I gotta look into it. But now, she just asked about the water company employees getting paid, has, uh, Magnolia giving them, and you, you gave them an answer right then and there.
I knew the answer.
I, I see, but when I ask something, you say you gotta look into it. But now, Mr. Odom, has Magnolia paid us anything?
No.
Who was, who was paying our debt obligation that we have now?
Repeat?
Who, who was paying the debt obligation that we voted on, uh, a couple of years ago to finance our new water plant rehabilitation?
They are paying now.
So they're paying it now? So when they start picking that payment up?
Two payments ago.
Okay, so we're not normal pay.
You said our new debt obligation?
No, the debt obligation we had about two years ago.
Our.
The rate increase.
Yes. That we supposed to have a separate account, that, that money.
Sixty, sixty thousand a month.
Do you want our bond payment?
Yes.
Okay, they're, they're making that payment.
Okay, proceed.
They have to, of statute or legal.
They're making that.
But, but, so I'm trying to figure, how did they get control of our bonds to make payments like that?
So, when you're under a state of emergency and you pass somebody over your water system. So when you're under a state of emergency and you pass somebody over your water system by statute, they collect the water funds. And when you have a bond, there is a statutory lien on those funds. So that can only be paid by them. The city of Tallulah can't make that payment and shouldn't because it's gotta come out of the water fund.
So now, but, but our water fund is supposed to go into, uh, Regis Bank. So is Magnolia paying the money to Regis Bank for the debt obligation?
Yes.
So they're making all those payments to Regis Bank?
They're required to.
But I'm just, now, remember, Mr. Odom said that they did not pay it at first. He said they didn't pay it first before. Now they're paying it, but they didn't want to pay it. So did they reimburse for what they didn't pay when they took over?
No.
Reimbursed us for that?
They're not giving, and then also they're using city equipment. They're using, they're not, they're not paying anything. They're using city equipment. They're using the backhoe, I'm saying backhoe. I, I know, but, but at one time they was using it. And, and, and we was paying, we paying the lease on it, or the rental fee on it, and they was using it for an extended period of time and never compensated us a dime for it. He said it. Even when they got it, yes. Because we said it had to happen because they weren't paying us. So we're not gonna get, so we're not gonna get reimbursed for the time they asked you. So we need money, okay? And I remember I was saying about the contract with the streets. I said, that, that, that's good, whatever we can, most contractors for the streets. And we decided that we were gonna do that. So now, we, we in a, in a budget shortfall, we gotta amend the budget. This company was using city materials, city, uh, equipment. They didn't pay us a dime for it, using our diesel, you know, using the equipment, not reimbursing us nothing for it.
Well, so who would ask for the money back? Is that Mr. Odom that would ask for the money back? That's already happened.
They paid us back?
Like I said earlier, Mr. Odom is giving them the information that they need so that that money can get reimbursed. Certain employees are sewer and certain employees are water, and he's giving them the correct pay periods and the correct employees so that can be taken care of.
So it hasn't been taken care of.
Why, so, so.
Not been taken care of. Mr. Odom is taking care of, is giving them the correct information.
So was.
That's correct. Now, now, and to remind everybody, there was originally a contract proposed to do exactly that along with these two contracts that the city of Tallulah never entered into for reimbursement purposes.
Be- because those companies were brought here because, on behalf of a state of emergency. So if the state brought Magnolia in, then the state should be responsible for paying whatever fees that should be paid.
So, uh, to remind you, counsel. The, the contract I'm referring to was re- reimbursing the city of Tallulah for the use of its employees and the city never entered that contract. So that, that was what was proposed. It didn't have anything to do with the state paying for it. Magnolia was trying to pay the city of Tallulah for the use of its employees and that never happened. And now the employees work for Patterson.
Okay, so, so when did Magnolia present that contract to the city?
When I, whatever day I emailed it to y'all some time ago, it was late.
But that was a contract there with Patterson?
No, it was a contract with Magnolia.
So how are we not going to their contract? So now because we didn't enter their contract, we can't be reimbursed?
No, everybody, everybody's confused. They're trying to reimburse the city.
Okay.
They need the correct number. They're making sure they get the correct numbers from the city clerk who is giving them the correct pay periods and the correct employees.
Okay.
And, and once that's done, I see no reason we shouldn't be reimbursed, but there is no contractual obligation to do it at this point in time. That's the state of affairs.
Okay, so, so now, so now, I, I, I've seen this happen before. When someone knows they violated or broken a contract, you call paying those individuals as a way of mitigating damages. So now if I come back and pay them for the time they work for the city, or, or, and they work for Magnolia, you have no grounds to sue me. But to take my, or use from me while I'm on the contract with another company is a breach of contract. That's a breach, and I know you're not gonna say it, but to circumvent the city employees and have them to work for a private company is depriving the city of their own employees. And that's illegal. Cause the contract says staff augmentation, which means I'm gonna improve what you have, not take your little and bring it to our large corporation. That's not how it's supposed to happen. So that's what happened. So I know, so what we should be doing at the turn, you should try to say, well, Magnolia, we got ground for suit.
I disagree with you.
Why? You said you know it.
I disagree with you. I'm happy to do the research, but I disagree with you. First of all, the employees were hired by Patterson, not Magnolia. That may give you a contractual issue, a hill to overcome. But I'd prefer to do the research and give it due writing instead of an open meeting.
Patterson was brought on board by Magnolia. So Patterson, so, so Patterson is working, so Patterson is working under the umbrella of Magnolia. They're not operating independently. They came here on behalf of Magnolia. So anything that Patterson does is authorized and endorsed by Magnolia.
Patterson was, I'm happy to research. Anything you have to research.
Okay.
Happy to.
We're gonna go here.
But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna have fun.
Approved contract for Magnolia Water Service.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, you looked at me five times. You seen my hand, and you, you, you never recognized it.
You, you answered. Well, hey, one question.
That's another question, that's another item.
You got a question, man?
Go ahead.
Who is it?
First of all, who is the point person for Patterson and Magnolia here at, at the city? Who, 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 who do they contact in order to give this information to?
The mayor and myself and the attorney.
So how does, and the attorney?
Well, the attorney is involved in all this, of course.
So if, if, when we ask questions and we can't get answers, the attorney knows more about these, these issues than you, Mr. Odom, and the mayor?
We're lucky to have a good attorney.
No.
Very lucky.
Okay. Okay, the, the second thing is, who gets the accounting report from Magnolia? On the, 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 uh, what they, that they're counting, that they're taking up for the water? Who gets that report?
They're a private company, you know, if you can get anything from them, good luck.
No. Yeah, that's not, that's, Mr. Odom, hear me and hear me well. See, the governor has come here and he's, the word, uh, Mr. Councillor Wells used, he'd shook you down. That's what he's done.
In your opinion?
No, that, that, this is true. This is true because if the governor comes in, and I've, I've been watching the governor for quite some time. The governor comes in, he's very impressive in his, in his speaking. And he tells you either you're gonna give me this water company because there are some violations been happening for many years, or you're going to jail. Now, if I'm wrong, you tell me I'm wrong.
Look, I can laugh, whatever, I hear something funny.
I mean, if I'm wrong, you tell me I'm wrong.
I hear something funny, I'm ridiculous.
No, if I'm wrong, you tell me I'm wrong. So therefore, we don't have, first of all, we don't have our accounting and we should know what, what, what our accounting should be, okay? Secondly, second, second, the, the accounting, you should know what the water company brings in from that note. We, we, that's our water company, that's the people's water.
I'm gonna go over and demand to look at their books, is that what you're telling me?
Absolutely, because their books is your books.
And they'll tell me to get lost. You know, if you're a private company, you have that right, you know?
Second. Mr. Will. We're not gonna have a argument about this.
I'm not having an argument.
You've got your three minutes.
No, my three minutes isn't enough.
Yeah, you've got one minute left.
You've got six months. So.
I have one minute for you to add and I will let you remove.
That's fine. You can remove me tonight, right now, if, if you so.
You don't attack me.
No, I'm not attacking you. I, you made a statement that I have one minute, and I made my statement.
He made a statement, didn't he?
Yeah, he did. So the second thing is that, and this is no attack on anyone because I, I believe that there are, there are more, more people in this room that love Tallulah than there are that want to give Tallulah our, 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 our things away to others, okay? So, and I'm speaking, and I'm speaking as I love you. I love you. This is, this is no attack. You're an attorney. Regardless if you the municipal judge or not, you love your system. You want Tallulah, you want the best for Tallulah. Because you have to drink the water, you have to bathe in it, you have to do everything. Everybody else have to do it in, in this. So why help me? Help us legally, legally, because we don't have to stay in this state of emergency. With not only you, I'm calling on every single attorney for the citizens in Tallulah. Not just you. I'm calling on all of them. They should be teamed up, they should be ready, gunlock and roll for the citizens of Tallulah. Because this is our city. We can't keep doing it this way. I'm done. You don't have to tell me when to stop because I know that I've made sense, uh, Mr. Mayor. And it's, it's an indictment on, on, on your behalf to even, how, how our city's even ranked.
Thank you.
I mean, you, 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 you.
I got something I need to say about a comment that was made a few minutes ago. Okay, it was said that maybe in some areas in this town, the water might be better. But like down where I live at, where I got that sewage problem that I've been before you all twice and talked about and ain't nobody saying nothing about it. I got plants in my backyard in pots and every day I have to water those plants. And I got some water out of the tap yesterday, but so bad I couldn't even water the dogs on that. It was just that bad. And all I had to do was pour it in the pot and water the plants to keep the plants growing. So don't, ain't no point in getting up there lying saying that the water is usable or is good because it's not good. It might be good in some other areas, but it ain't no good down there where I live at. It ain't no good. Okay. Cause it's, you're right, it's coming out of the same place and it ain't no good.
Number, number, uh, eleven. Approve the contract. Do I have a motion to do that?
Well, did we approve? Did we have a motion second?
No, I, I, I need a motion as a second. Approve the, uh, contract with Magnolia Service Customers Sharing the Customer Information. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Introduction of the Amendment of Section twelve, one seventy-five, provides general per- no, that's not.
That's the law.
Okay, so I wanna say. So number eleven, approve contract with Magnolia Water UOC for sharing of customer information. Okay, so if we don't charge, if they only charge us two hundred dollars, we don't have to hire someone and pay more for this information?
No, this is your company, you don't have to hire anybody, so.
For the services? But you don't have to pay somebody.
Yeah, that's right.
The information has to be done. It has to be done. Somebody has to pay. So a cheaper route.
They took all our employees. I feel like they ran.
They're saying pay, but when we get it back, those same employees that's currently working and learning.
They got everything, that's what I know.
They currently working and learning, so which means they would be ready to run our, our plant. Am I correct?
No.
Am I the only one that said that?
Because they're not licensed. They, they aren't licensed.
But you just said, someone just said, they're taking our employees. All right, what if we get our water company back? You just said, uh-huh, you just said they're not licensed.
Ms. Houston.
I feel like workers that are working for them are learning so that they can work for us when we get our plant back.
We, first of all, we have lost our water. We have not lost our water. We just under a state of emergency.
You.
A state of emergency means that something has happened to cause the government to come in and help Tallulah out. Whether the water was contaminated or whatever. It doesn't mean that we lost our companies.
All right, so going back to the employees that you were so concerned about while.
Still is.
What did you say about employees? They are now working for.
First of all, I haven't said anything about employees because I wasn't.
Okay, someone said something about employees. I'm sitting here, if someone is currently doing the job, aren't they learning?
Well, the.
Aren't they learning? Cause I agree that you know when it's certified, but you gotta have to learn. At some point, you gotta learn how to be certified. So by sitting at the house or, or, or not working, you're not getting it.
Let me, let me make, let me make a statement, Ms. Houston. Why don't we just, as a council? Why don't, why don't we?
You're not recognizing.
I think Ms. Houston was talking, we were talking back and forth. So if, if the council recognized me that, that mean I can speak, am I right, attorney?
No.
No, the mayor.
The mayor. If it's only gonna cost us two hundred dollars to get the data we need, I think that's the cheapest way to go. Can we afford to pay, can we, and somebody just said we have a financial, but we're using a financial mind. Can we afford to pay more?
No.
Why can't the government, can they require them to provide?
The motion.
To approve number eleven. Wait, wait a minute, Ms. Martin.
What's that, Ms. Jackson?
Why, why can't we just ask the governor to require them to approve that, uh, to give us that information for free? Why are we going to give them more money? They paying off our revenue.
We gonna be in the same shape.
The thing that's the turning, you do that.
Ms. Jackson. Ms. Houston. Do what?
Lisa. Was that number ten or?
It was number eight.
They, they were at the second. And they were posing a question.
I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. Um, I mentioned earlier that we have a payroll reimbursement request that we have asked for. Mr. Odom, what's the last total you recall requesting back as a reimbursement?
It was about a hundred thousand.
All right. And so contractually right now, there's no obligation to return that hundred thousand dollars to us. And we've requested it. Contractually, there's no obligation to do it. Um, I would hate to lose a hundred thousand dollars for potentially two hundred and one.
Oh, no, they can be taken away. They do ours, they do ours. Legally, they can be taken away.
And I'm not saying that they can't.
They can't hold us hostage because that's what you're saying they're gonna do, is hold us hostage.
I'm not saying that they are.
A hundred thousand dollars, but I'm just, y'all not supposed to give them enough pennies.
If y'all don't remember, the man from Patterson came in and said that we come in and take over Rule Distress Water Company. Y'all forgetting it. Let's stop giving people what they want, free money.
Thank you, Free Company.
No, 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 they just posed a question. They just posed a question for the attorney. Can, can we deal with that question?
If, if the council desires for me to do that, I can certainly do that.
What was the question?
It, it was the same question as you, Judge Jackson, to ask the city, uh, to, on behalf of the city, to ask the state to have Magnolia supplies for that information. And it lost. And we, we can certainly do that.
Cause right now, we don't have money.
Uh, in the interim, I'm not sure how we'll get our, and how we have been getting our water use data for sewer collections. I don't, I don't know how that's gonna pan out. So I just wanna be clear, wanna be clear with you, so you know, you know what's the state.
Charles, there's a motion on the table.
I'll have a second.
I said what I had to say.
So, so we're gonna ignore what they asked?
No.
No.
Well, there was no second, so it's dead. There was no second, so it's dead.
We people, we told you to talk and everybody. Okay, you got the motion. Now, I, I asked them for a second. Second. Houston? Scott? All in favor? Roll call, Gerald.
Scott?
Yes.
Houston?
Yes.
Harris?
No.
Day?
No.
Wells?
No.
Motion did not carry.
Good.
Can we, uh, address, uh, Magnolia about doing this, you know, the mayor about doing that?
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, number twelve, approve the contract with Magnolia for water use, you, 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 UOC sharing the disconnect and reconnect of service. Okay?
Do we have to think about that? No, no.
So, and again, I wanna, wanna make sure everybody understands why we're getting. And again, I wanna, wanna make sure everybody understands why we're getting this out of the system. This is as it relates to the Tallulah sewer system. Essentially, what this contract does, same as the contract before it sets out, that Tallulah has responsibilities for sewer, Magnolia has responsibilities for water. Um, now. In order for Magnolia to disconnect water service, okay? What they are asking us to contractually agree to do is to have a fifty dollar disconnection fee for each delinquent customer and a fifty dollar reconnection fee. Now, if you look at our statute as to what we collect from our customers. It amounts to a total of seventy-five dollars for a disconnect and a reconnect. So, the city has also planned to introduce an ordinance to make it fifty dollars on both sides for us. So that there's no loss of funds to the city on a disconnection or reconnect for failure to pay for water or sewer service.
So the, the city know what?
They've, they've got ordinance to address that difference, yes.
So he's saying, uh, citizens itself be responsible for their fifty dollars. Go wait.
Well, a hundred dollars, right?
Yeah, go wait.
Yes, current, Ms. Harris?
It's seventy-five dollars.
That's right.
So we still getting guilty.
Well, and the city could address that by ordinance, Ms. Harris. And I, and if you do sign this contract, I would suggest the city does address it by ordinance, so there's no loss. So is there a difference?
You know, this, this is, this is, this is.
It's gonna be running out, everybody.
Yeah, so that's what I understand is how you do that.
You can't charge the sewer job. And fifty dollars for water.
No, 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 that's not correct. The city is operating the sewer system. Magnolia is operating the water system. If you don't pay your water bill, Magnolia has to play a dealing for you for that. You don't pay your sewer bill, and the only way to deal with you on your sewer is to cut off your water. And so Magnolia would be providing the service of cutting off water due to the sewer bill not being paid for the city of Tallulah. Okay, so what they're saying is, is in order for us to cut off the water bill because they didn't pay your sewer. We're, we're gonna charge the city of Tallulah fifty dollars to go turn it off. And fifty dollars to turn it back on. Now, what Tallulah decides to charge from that customer. And, and that's no different than it's been in the past. If, if water, sewer, trash was all one invoice, now it's all two. So if you pay water and you don't pay sewer, yes, your water can be turned off, and that's exactly what this contract contradicts.
Which, okay, you said Magnolia stayed in the ground. So Magnolia is contracted, uh, well, Patterson contracted, right? So Patterson will be doing the cutoff, right?
I, I don't know if it ever get to it.
So Patterson will be doing the cutoff, so we will be paying Mag- Magnolia Patterson. You remember, I told y'all a couple months ago, that y'all need to go and amend that ordinance with the parish. But no one never said anything. I just look like this, I do my research.
I don't know what you're talking about, the parish.
Parish, go look at the oil, it's solid waste. It's a solid waste oil, and it's got something to do with the city of Tallulah water, sewage, and garbage. Go look at it. I read it. Dirty.
I can't. So we're gonna, they're gonna up the ante. We're already being charged seventy-five dollars by the city, which I think is just crazy. But they're gonna up the ante now, so it's a hundred dollars. If, uh, the city decides that somebody hasn't paid your sewage. Like I said, my sewage is gonna up, and I'm the only person in my house, and it's gonna up fifteen or sixteen dollars this month.
If you don't pay them.
But it's, the thing is, the problem I have with that, right now, I'm battling with Magnolia because they're overcharging me because I'm flushing every few days. Poison out of my home, and they wanna charge you for it. They should not be given authority to, to now come in and to charge fifty dollars, uh, twice, when we all know they just come out there and they turn it back on. That's all they do. They come out there and switch it. Why would they be fifty dollars to disconnect?
No, they've been charging you, they're not been charging you to flush your, your system.
Yeah, they trying to charge me, I'm battling with them now, Magnolia right now about that. They're doing the same thing, and now you all are charging me with sewage, I realize, because I am flushing the water, so I'm, my sewage is going up. So I'm actually just being slammed both ways now with that. So that's something I've gotta deal with. Uh, Magnolia should be doing all of this for free, because again, they have our revenue. And out on here, it's not making any revenue because of you. They got our money before they're sending in contracts to charge the citizens more money, or charge the city more money. Why don't they account for what they're taking in? None of you all are interested in the, the, the revenue that's being taken in by the water company, by Magnolia? I'm talking to the council and the mayor, y'all not, y'all not interested in that?
I promise I am.
I don't understand that. That, that, that water company is a revenue-making source.
No construction.
I can't even see. Two hundred thousand dollars. When we have. But we, we not checking in what they're doing, because I know they're overcharging me. And I'm not going to let them change it, they're overcharging you. So I'm willing to bet you, they're getting more because they're charging more money. We need to find out what they're intaking and what they're sending their checks off. Because what are they doing with that money? Cause it seems like we're, they're trying to get money out of us every which way we're turning. So I don't understand that. We need to find out, all of this, this contracts they're sending in need to be shut down. We need to find out what our water company is making, and what they're sending out of, and where the excess is going. Cause again, my water's still brown in my house.
I got it. And, and al- also in these contracts that have been brought up, you know? They're asking us to provide insurance for them. Which I don't understand why we're having to pay insurance for the company.
What condition you talking about?
Uh-huh, it's, it's in those, those contracts.
John, where?
Is it a full exemption from civil liability? Page two, but eight. Then it has, they on page three. Insurance policy required. That's time, I'm on these. Agreement for sharing of customer information.
What they?
It's, uh, three. That's the insurance policy that's required. And then the liability, uh, civil liability part is, uh, on four.
Insurance policy.
Number four, page two.
You're on the three?
Three or eight. On the agreement for sharing of customer information. Number six says, insurance for Tallulah shall at all times keep in force a general comprehensive public liability policy issued by a company authorized due business Louisiana. And reasonably acceptable to Magnolia. Authorized due business Louisiana policy limits reasonably accepted to Magnolia. Said policy shall include Magnolia as an additional name insured. Tallulah shall furnish a certificate of insurance to Magnolia evidencing that such insurance is in effect. If at any time Tallulah fails to maintain said insurance and furnish such certificate of insurance, Magnolia may cease to notify Tallulah of new service connection until such requirement is satisfied. Then also it says, uh, uh, number five, identification. Tallulah will defend, identify, and hold Magnolia harmless against any and all claims, including all legal fees, legal costs, and other expenses really demanded may claim incurred by delinquent customer arising out of or resulting from the good faith termination of water services or other related actions taken by Magnolia in the direction of the organization agency of Tallulah in terms of this agreement. Such defense indemnity and whole harmless shall not be applicable to claims, expenses, et cetera, resulting from Magnolia's own negligence, fault, or failure of that of its agency. So what I'm saying is, if they are already on the contract, and they already have insurance, why are we providing insurance to cover them?
Okay, so what, what these two paragraphs mean, okay? You're, you're not buying insurance for Magnolia. The city already has a general comprehensive liability policy. Magnolia is taking action, if this contract were entered on the city's behalf, relative to delinquent customers. This indemnity paragraph is. This paragraph right here has got information regarding a delinquent customer arising out of or resulting from the good faith termination of water service. This indemnity and this liability provision are specifically limited to that service that Magnolia would be providing for the city of Tallulah. And it's standard in this form of contract, okay?
So, but it's also, we are putting them, it said Magnolia has an additional name insured.
Yes, that's, that's.
Which means we are providing insurance to them.
No, it, it means that you're, you're naming them as an additional insured, specifically the services that they're providing. You're not buying additional insurance for them.
They're covered under your insurance, right?
They're covered under your insurance, only for acts taken as a response to some of the cities, that the cities asked them to do.
Right.
This is not health insurance.
Right, it's if, it's like the city goes and tells them to cut off my water, because the city's saying I'm not paying them. The city is mistaken and I am paying them. Then I can't sue Magnolia, they're saying I'm gonna sue the city, because the city makes a mistake. And I think it's sitting in there, I understood the language. If Magnolia is negligent, then Magnolia is gonna be responsible for their own negligence. So that's just, that's fair.
Thank you, and then that last sentence, just, just to reiterate what, what Judge Jackson was just saying. It says, the defense, the indemnity, and the whole harmless shall not be applicable to any claims, expenses, et cetera, resulting from Magnolia's negligence, fault, or failure or that of its agents or its employees. So, to follow her example, if they were to go to her house and run their Magnolia vehicle repeatedly into her car, that would be negligence or even gross negligence. And that wouldn't be the responsibility of the city to pay. Probably something to fight about, but yeah. That's what the contract is for.
I got a question.
You have a comment?
I haven't, not on this item.
You, you, you.
Who is the consulting engineer for this Tallulah?
Well, that, we've, several, several candidates.
You don't know who the consulting engineer is for the city?
Well, you, uh, Mag- oh, Magman, I must have just lost that word.
Well, I haven't seen him here since she said that we owed him a million dollars, and he came for that million dollars, hell, I ain't seen him no more. He needs to be here, because I got some questions I need to ask you about this situation down there where I live at. So you, uh, somebody need to get in touch with him, he need to come for some of these meetings. He came to all of them when he was looking for that million dollars that you gave him. I ain't never seen nothing like this before.
Cut it off now, what you got?
Cut it off.
Did you come in?
Thank you. I'm coming on number twelve. So, do we have, uh, we have liability insurance?
Well, not on, on Ralph's, but we have a group insurance.
Okay, we, what capacity?
Well, like our vehicles are insured, buildings are insured, workers comp, that type of thing. But as far as a, a big, huge, they're very expensive on, uh.
So we don't have general liability, uh, 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 general liability insurance, like, as, as attorney just spoke?
We're looking into that right now.
No, Mr. Odom, what about through LMA? Are we insured through risk management through LMA, we're members, so we are insured through LMA.
No, it's, it's, not, uh, not LMA.
Risk management, risk management is, is a part of, of LMA.
But we have, we're also with travelers.
Yeah, so, so we have more than one insurance policy.
But I think, it, it doesn't go really high up the ladder as far as coverage. To get to that position, you really gotta put out a lot of money, it's very expensive. So we're, we're looking into getting, uh, a little higher grade of what we got right now. And we're gonna get tickets back on that month, so.
Liability insurance would be regular.
Well, I mean, you know. We're, our vehicles are insured, we, we're just like everybody else.
Okay.
And so that's to.
Somebody walk in this room.
You, Magnolia under the umbrella, so we shall not more money. Is that what they do?
When you add somebody as an additional insured, in my experience, it does not increase the value of your policy. Um, you know, if you were to add thousands of people as a certificate of insured, it could degrade the value of your policy.
He did just say that that was going to cost us more money.
He's incorrect. I don't, and I don't think that's what he was saying. He said that to buy a larger policy than what we have.
He said they're looking, and did you say you're looking into it?
We were looking at buying a little bit better quality.
What kind of policy?
Well, you know, like you said, you're walking down the street, you fall down, and you sue the city. Several, several years ago, we had that kind of insurance.
That's a premise.
But, but we don't have it right now, so we're looking into getting back.
So, let's put on my, my, on, put on the agenda.
Uh, this is on the agenda? This is about the water. That you, that you put on the, on the agenda for, to go into receivership. So, uh, and we having all these, thi- this confusion about this contract, we get every, contract every other month from Magnolia. And we have, we have councilman, uh, Scott, uh, councilwoman Ha- uh, uh, Houston, uh, councilwoman Day, and wh- whomever else voted for receivership. And it wasn't needed. Now, you should put a motion on the table to ask to come out of the, the, this, this state of emergency, which you can at any time, you have thirty days. As long as you give them thirty days notice. And why not, and I'm gonna give the others, whoever running for mayor, a, a, a nugget. You, 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 you find your own management company. You find your own, uh, uh, servicing company to come in and, and, and serve us. And give us the best water, because Magnolia's not the best, uh, management company there either. There are others. And I don't understand why we aren't even, even, you know, searching for these, these companies to come in to help. We should, that's something that I mentioned years ago, about having our own management company come in and help us manage. And even the management, the, 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 uh, Patterson, they aren't certified. So we are still, we, they, we are still breaking the law, even under them, because they not level five. A level, is it level five, level four? It's a level four.
Mr. Good's, Mr. Good still works there, he's a level four certified operator.
Well, if we got Mr. Good's there that, that's working, he's a level four, and they have to work under Mr. Good's, that mean they should be paying us. Because they aren't certified to do the job. And the governor has sent these people here that aren't certified, and that's the reason I keep saying, hey, the governor is strong arming you. I'm hearing things that you guys aren't hearing. In Baton Rouge, and he's not just doing, Tallulah is a, 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 uh, what, uh, uh, what you call, uh? They're, they're gonna be example for the state. The city of Tallulah. A, a, a pilot program for the state. And if we don't get this thing together, it, this, not only the city will be taking over, because we, we're not able to, um, we're, we're not able to handle what we supposed to handle as, as administration. And we, you know, I, y'all hear me constantly say, we can't keep doing it this way. And it's easy to do it the right way. All we have to do is just take a moment and not try to shut an individual down, but say, hey, hey, Ms. Bill, I hear your ideals. Come and help me. Because I'm, I, if, if we have the same interest with, with one another, that we wanna see our city better, why not bring them in? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't cost you anything. This city been doing the same way, with the same administration, the same assistant, been running the whole city. Mayor, you been here thirty plus years. You been thirty plus years. Ms. Lewis been here sixteen, uh, however many years she been here. And the city has been declining every since.
Thank you for your comments.
I, I had said that in about twenty minutes. Now, now, this, this is, I've been quiet for a reason, this is my concern. We have several questions or concerns with these contracts, this for Magnolia. Now, you all quickly drafted a letter and sent to the governor about me going speaking, saying I spoke for myself, not as a city of Tallulah, which I never said I was speaking to the city of Tallulah. And you know that letter you wrote, and you sent to the governor, had a C C there, but you know that, yeah.
Turn it over.
So, so, it, it was wrote, it was wrote, I don't know, it was wrote, but it, it was wrote like, it was wrote nice. And I said, golly. This letter was written one day. And we've been asking for the past three months for you all to get someone from Magnolia to come to a meeting. And we can't get no representative from Magnolia to come here. Now, whoever wrote that letter, y'all did a great job, I love it.
It's right in the letter?
It was, it was, it was perfectly written. To say, I'm speaking on my own behalf, uh, uh, I, 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 uh, then I went out the road. Just say, I'm speaking on my own behalf, uh, uh, I, 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 uh, they, I was authorized by the citizens. We, we, I made a lot of we statements, not these, I, I represent people. So, when I say something, I'm talking about we. I'm not talking about you all because I stand on my own. And I ain't care what nobody thought about me since October twenty-first, two thousand twenty, when Jerry D. Wells closed his eyes. So, when y'all write letters and send out text messages, don't stop me. But we cannot write a letter to tell Brad or somebody from Magnolia, we need y'all at the council meeting. We can't write a letter or make a call to say, we need y'all to be at the council meeting for the citizens to have questions. But you can write a letter criticizing the actions of a councilperson that's saying, Tallulah need better water. I don't get that for the life of me. But we've been asking for Magnolia to be here, and they said they gonna come to every, every, uh, once a meeting a month. And the only thing we get is reports, send us an email by letter.
And contracts.
And nobody comes and talks to us. So, we told attorney to draft a letter for, um, Archie Jones, who Magman's appointed. The letter been drafted, they been sent. But we drafted a letter in two minutes to C C, to the, to send to the governor, to the state representative, the state senator, to go sell, we sent to everybody in the state legislature, uh, state legislature that's on here. But we can't tell Magnolia to have representative here. We can't tell Patterson to have representative here. Are we on the same team? Are you for Tallulah? Because I went to Baton Rouge talking about Tallulah and its water.
Yes, sir.
You said the water quality was good. We got services sent back. The letter said, I'm speaking on my own accord, and I will stand on my own. So, I don't care about no letter being written, no text message going out. I care about none of that. I don't care about no call on the superintendent, I mean, going to Baton Rouge. I'll stand on my own. So, when we are dealing with stuff from Magnolia, they need to have somebody here present for us to ask questions. So, if we can write that letter about me, write a letter to Brad Tebow. Write a letter to David Patterson and say, we need y'all at the next council meeting. But, uh, you wrote the letter to the governor, say, governor, can you make sure that they're here? Since you want to know about me? You address that letter quick. Dear governor, uh, Councilman Wells, District Five, yes, I would tell. And not stare. Because Jerry Wells died, I told, I told him twenty-first, two thousand twenty. He said, listen, the last woman, person I cared about thinking something about me and that I worried about would be in saving. So, I'm gonna stand for Tallulah. So, when Magnolia wants to do some, have them come and talk to us. So, we got questions we can ask them. See, some stuff you can answer, you don't get y'all answered for them, but some stuff you can't answer for them. They need to be here. So, can we draft a letter? So, whoever wrote it? I don't know, the mayor, whether it's you, attorney, or Yvonne. Whoever wrote it. You wrote it, man?
What you want me to tell them? Tell somebody the next meeting you want somebody?
Not gonna do it. We told them a month, two months ago. We told them two months ago. They said, people can't answer the phone for them. But draft a letter, that's documentation. Send an email, the, the, the C C, all of us in it. Like y'all did everybody in Baton Rouge about me.
I don't appreciate y'all and me.
No, I, I, I'm saying whoever wrote the letter. I said, whether, uh, it was Yvonne, I don't care who wrote it. I'm just saying whoever wrote it. Whether it's Yvonne, the mayor, or the attorney, whoever wrote it. I said whoever wrote it. Because I know whoever wrote it.
Repeatedly, I sign my letters.
Got you.
Let's, let's move on.
Again, I sign my letters.
All right, where do you go, number twenty, number twelve?
Are we gonna get somebody to come to the one of the meetings?
Bring, uh, bring the contract, Magnolia, for disconnect or reconnect. Do I have a motion for that? No motion? Fail.
There we go.
Mayor, can you thank them?
Please put a comment.
All right.
Please put a comment.
All right, what you have?
Oh, I didn't have that conversation.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, it's fine. I just have a, a question, um. If you're gonna just say, hey, on the behalf of the city, the city waters improvement and all of that, my suggestion will be to gather data from the people because what happens if we get data from businesses, institutions, organizations, they have the power to manipulate or change the data the way that they would want it, that, um, that's more comfortable or more feasible for them. But if you, if you were to partner with the Madison Journal and you get a poll about whose water is steadily improving, or if you took the people out of the, the districts and you got the people into a room that had the worst water, like Ms. Jackson, Attorney Jackson was talking about her water being black, and you track the progress of their water because data means everything, and we need to have our own access to our own data that's separate from the water company. We need to be talking to the people and polling the people. You can, you can, you can use media sources to do that. But that's just a suggestion. And as people are making suggestions, there should be, I know that there's supposed to be a written record, but keep a tab of these suggestions so we can figure out what do we need to, to access? What do we need to go back to? How do we need to review things to improve things? Because as people, we're constantly talking to one another. We need to do this, we need to do that, and you still get those suggestions months and months after each other. We need to be making progression. It's all about moving forward and not being stagnant. But that's it.
One, one, uh, question or comment. When you all are saying, uh, when you, you put on Facebook that the water is safe to consume, where are they testing that water? Because every time I see that, I'm thinking, I look at my water, it's brown. I don't know how they're telling us the water is safe to consume. Where, who's testing that water? Where are they getting samples? But where are they getting the samples?
Different places in the water.
And why the results never posted? So, the city states that it's good?
I, my water is brown, so I'm gonna keep reading.
I have just one question. Uh, concerning the sewage rate. Are we being charged one flat rate? And how are we being charged a, a rate for sewage when the city don't have the data from Magnolia to even charge them? But y'all just said that they didn't give y'all any data?
We have the old, we have the list.
You can't go by the old when you got a new managing company.
But it's, we have control over that part of it, so we have a list.
So, what you basically saying is y'all are charging what, what you want without the data?
The council approved the rate that we used, you know?
Yes, but that was under the city of Tallulah. Magnolia, Magnolia is.
Oh, you're talking about Magnolia?
Right, because.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking.
Because in the past, the wa- the water and the sewage kind of based on the same thing. If your water, if you paying one thing for water, your sewage rate was based.
Just a different factor.
Right, so how are y'all collecting the data?
We're having to take it at a time. That's how.
They charge for the sewage. That's how I'm asking.
Well, we're trying to do this today.
No, they, 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 because my sewage went up. To file a complaint on the charge for the sewage, where do I go? The sewage, I, my sewage is going up, and I'm by myself, so it shouldn't be going up. So, where do I file a complaint on that?
By the city hall.
Okay, city hall, okay, because I was gonna say, not the Carmelade, but I, I can come up here.
Okay, if, uh, did Magnolia rehab our plant?
They're rehabbing some of that.
So, they rehabbed our plant?
They're, they're re- rehabbing.
They rehabbing. Okay, so if they rehabbing our plant, why do we have to give our plant to Magnolia, I mean, to, uh, Patterson? But we still have our plant commercials over there, and nobody from Patterson is certified. So, why are we giving them our money and our?
They're training these guys to do that, too.
Yeah, but they training them for what? We are training the, the people. They learning from the people that's already there.
Man, man, I have a question. Do we still have our funding that was allocated to us for the new water, for the water plant rehabilitation? USDA grant, uh, loan, the, the, uh, grant that we got from?
Some of that, I, I can get you the correct.
So, we don't have all the funding that we once had?
No.
Which, which ones we don't have right now?
I don't know. I can get that. I don't want to say, but I'll make the, 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 okay. Motion to adjourn?
Nowhere to start from.